Good evening. I'd like to convene this town council meeting for Thursday, October 13th. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements. The general election will be held on Tuesday, November 8th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It can't be too soon for me. The three polling place locations are the James Master Cole Upper Elementary School, the Merrimack Middle School, and St. John Newman Church. Please contact the town clerk's office, and I'm going to say a phone number here, so if you need to have it, get your pen and pencil. The town clerk's office is at 424-3651, or visit the New Hampshire Secretary of State website to find your specific polling location. I can't emphasize more that you have to find out. Just because you were, for example, at St. John Newman prior to the single polling places does not mean that you are registered there. So please find out where you need to go before the day. Okay, Thursday, October 27th at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room, a regular council meeting. The November and December meetings will be scheduled for the first and third Thursdays of each month on the following dates. Thursday, November 3rd at 7:00 p.m., again here in the Matthew Thornton Room for a regular council meeting. And another regular council meeting on Thursday, November 17th at 7:00 p.m. in this room. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Merrimack Senior Fair is Wednesday, October 19th from 9:00 to 11:30 at the John O'Leary Adult Community Center. Organizations that offer services to seniors will be available to answer questions and provide information, such as Elderly Services of Greater Nashua, New Hampshire Fuel Assistance, Living at Home Senior Care, Affordable Hearing, St. Joseph's Community Services Meals on Wheels, Merrimack Library, and National Eye Association, just to name a few. The annual Drug Takeback Day is Saturday, October 22nd from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Merrimack Police Station located at 31 Babuza Lake Road. Bring your unwanted, unused prescription medications for safe and proper disposal in our drug drop box in the lobby. And take backs are strictly anonymous. The Parks and Recreation Department is gearing up for the 24th Annual Halloween Party, which will take place on Friday, October 28th from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Wassman Park. Absentee ballots for the November 8th general election are now available. The supervisors of the checklist will be holding voter registration sessions on the following dates and times. Saturday, October 15th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Merrimack Library. Wednesday, October 19th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., also at the library. Tuesday, October 25th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Merrimack Library. Tuesday, November 1st from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Town Hall. And lastly, if weather conditions permit, EverSource's transmission vendor will have a helicopter between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on Monday, October 17th, or Tuesday, October 18th, to perform storm hardening maintenance of the transmission system. A helicopter is being used due to the remote location of this transmission line, which is not easily accessed by transmission line crews. The transmission line system maintenance location is between Mallard Point, they were out there today, and Buckman Oleane. This work is expected to take one day to complete. Thank you.
Now, sorry, I forgot to mention that Dan Drea and Eileen Cabanel are excused from tonight's meeting. Okay. Okay, PFOA update. This is a presentation and discussion by the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services regarding historical perspective of air quality testing at St. Cobain/Kemfab site. This all started when Tom Mahan, who I'm going to take over the introduction, requested that we consider, and it's on the agenda later, and I've kept it there on purpose, to do a request for information. So Tom, do you want to just do an introductory statement, and then you can introduce yourselves?
Sure. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for coming this evening. I think my memo to the council with my request sort of explains some of the rationale for why I wanted to gather the information that I had put in that particular memorandum about air quality issues involved in the discharges from St. Cobain's property. The St. Cobain property and prior years, just wanting to know, I'm just curious as to what exactly your responsibilities are, what exactly you did, you entered into agreement with them back in 2006 or 2004 regarding the reduction of PFOA, the use of PFOAs. And just exactly, you know, what transpired in the meantime. There's been a lot of data flowing back and forth from the village district and from St. Cobain, but I haven't seen anything from the department as to what exactly they were doing in this process that we've been going through, okay? It's not a, you know, I'm just curious as to what happened, just to get, make sure. I see it as a whole, the information, quite frankly, and I just needed to appreciate it having that hole filled.
So when I introduce you, Clark, this is New Hampshire DES Assistant Commissioner Clark Fries, and why don't you, Fryze?
Fryze.
Sorry. It is Fryze.
Clark, everybody gets Clark right.
Okay, Clark. If it's from, if you're in New England, you go Clark. Go right ahead.
So I got Kathy Bean and Ed Paduta with me. They're our senior air inspection team. What I'll do though is sort of try and run through, we didn't really know exactly what you wanted. I didn't copy your memo. We just were told you had some questions. Eileen asked if we could come and basically be here to answer questions and make sure we understand what you're looking for and make a commitment to get you whatever you're looking for. So first of all, hopefully answer some of your questions. PFOA as ApFO, which is its salt version, has been used at the St. Cobain facility at least dating back to 2001. Kemfab operated towers since at least 1988, and they probably used ApFO at that time, but we don't know that for sure. In 2001, St. Cobain Performance Plastics installed nine more towers, effectively doubling the capacity of the facility, and at that point, we know they were using ApFO. ApFO is regulated by NHDES as an air toxic pollutant, which means we measure how much goes into the air, and at the fence line, there's a limit of what can be put into the air by concentration. In 2001, when St. Cobain obtained their permit for the expanded operations, they did it applying using information from another facility where they had tested in New York, and what that showed is there was no detectable level of ApFO coming out of the chimneys. In 2004, more modern methodologies were invented and they retested, and at that point, they did detect that ApFO was coming out of the smokestacks. They reported that to NHDES, and in 2005, following some follow-on emissions testing in Merrimack at the plant, it was determined that there was a potential, if all of the chimneys were run at the same time, that they would exceed the ambient air limits that are set for PFOA/ApFO. So in 2006, an administrative order by consent was signed requiring the phase-out of ApFO use at the facility. During the phase-out period, St. Cobain was limited to an ApFO dispersion content of 75 parts per million, which was a reduction by at least a factor of two, and they also made commitments to reduce the total amount that they were using. The last ApFO-containing dispersion was used December 2014. In 2007, reports from St. Cobain, they were able to show that substantial reductions had been achieved, in line with their commitments. May 2nd and 3rd of this year, a new stack test was conducted. We got the results back around 21 July, and it showed we were still seeing very low levels coming out of the stack of PFOA. We went to all the suppliers of all the chemicals that they use. They gave us their proprietary, you know, chemicals that they're using, and all of the suppliers have provided us with written statements that none of the chemicals contain any PFOA anymore. Which leaves that there's a residue left in the St. Cobain plant, and that's where the PFOA is coming from. So St. Cobain has gone through and stripped out one line, put in all new stacks. You might notice it's a very nice shiny-looking stack. They sandblasted all the internal duct work, and last week, we conducted air tests on that stack. Those results will be about two to three weeks, and then if that's the case, and we found that it is just the residue that's in the ducting that's providing this low-level ApFO, PFOA, then they'll go through and strip all of the rest of the facilities down. Sort of a short history from then to now.
Okay. So that initial stack test, you said after the new technology was developed, was that something that was conducted by your department?
No, 2004, they did the testing in New York at their other facility and identified that, you know, they were now seeing it even though they're falling the same price. It's just the technology has really advanced on the testing. In 2005, we did do air testing at the facility in Merrimack to back up their results, and that's when we found through calculation that they could exceed the ambient air limits.
Okay, so your department conducted those tests in '05?
No, it was Bar Engineering actually did the 2005.
I'm sorry.
It was under contract to us, right?
No, it was under contract to.
If you want to...
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. So...
I was going to say, if you want to just make sure you... Mike is on.
Yeah, I should have been clear. We don't actually do the stack tests. We usually hire a firm, or we make somebody else hire a firm. If we make them hire a firm, we approve the firm and the statement of work before they often conduct the work. So the tests that were just done this year, again, they hired them, we watched, we did the statement of work. Ed was actually up when they did the first set of tests this year, and I think you were up last week, right?
I was up for both of them.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a quick question. This has to do with C8, right? Right now, they're using C6. Do we measure for C6? Or analyze for C6?
We did in the air tests that were done. We also, the lab that we use, ALS Global, has come up with a test for C6, the C6 that they use. We have been testing that in the water samples in the area, not all of them, but a random sample. And so far, we're not seeing it. The C6s that they use now are actually designed to break down in the environment. And part of the proprietary, you know, we can't share information, is exactly what that breakpoint is and exactly how it's designed. We do know what the breakpoint for the C6 that they use in Merrimack is. The test, which is for the whole C6 unit, not the breakdowns, we're not detecting it, so...
Okay, so...
It looks like it's breaking down as designed.
And you're not detecting it in air samples?
These are the water samples.
Okay, water samples.
We don't do a lot of air samples, so we really do use the water as a surrogate in this case.
Okay, but the sample that you sent out that you're waiting for the results on, for the new stacks, is C6 on that list to be analyzed?
No, Bar does not have it.
I don't believe so.
Unfortunate, because you were sending it out anyway. It just would have been nice to have it covered.
Yeah, as I said, ALS really invented the test for C6, the one C6.
So even better.
It's brand new. This is really brand-new stuff.
I think there is concern expressed that sometime in the future there may be additional information that is found, that we should have been concerned about it. Like with C8, I mean, there's a certain amount, we didn't know, we're learning more. So since we had the availability to do the test, it just would have been nice information to acquire. Especially because it's new pipes and it's, you know...
Right. The one point of comfort, the little bit of research we've been able to find on the C6s, they do not have nearly the half-life in the body, and they are less toxic than the C8s. And the risk to the human being is how long it stays in your body and how toxic it is while there. If both of those are significantly lower, the multiplier is much, much lower.
Yeah, and the effect.
And instead of hanging in for 3.8 years, which PFOA does, this stuff apparently hangs in for a couple of days. So it does clear out much, much faster, and the limited reports we've been able to find, and again, there's a series of C6s. It's not like there's only one.
Okay.
But the ones we've been able to find any data on, they're apparently less toxic, too.
This may not be an appropriate question for you, because you're not Department of Health and Human Services, but you may have some information. I know they're going to be doing a sampling of blood testing.
Yes.
Do we know how many letters have been sent out, and what kind of response you've been getting?
I believe, and they may have changed the design...
I won't hold you to the number.
Yeah, they were going to send out letters to 200 households.
Correct.
Randomly selected. The goal was to get 200 people.
Correct.
And they were sending those out, they worked with us, they're off the bottled water list that we have. We're using that as a standard in the state. They worked with us through our GIS system to get a good random distribution throughout. And it's not just in Merrimack, it's also in Bedford, because the MVD water is serviced into Bedford also.
Okay.
I believe they sent the letters out. I don't believe that they've down-selected the houses yet based on the responses.
Okay, just to give you a heads up, there was concern expressed that if you, if it was chosen by GES, let's say I'm in an apartment building, and that notification would have gone to the owner of the department building that they pay the water bill. That person may or not respond to that, because it's the owner of the building, not someone who lives there, and there were 40 residents there. That's a population that you're not going to be hitting if you, just to keep that in consideration.
I hadn't heard that before.
You don't, you know what I mean.
Yes, I do, and actually, we've run into it in Litchfield, too, where the homeowner is not as responsive as the people in wanting to get bottled water, and we've had some issues with that. This, I don't want to take things wrongly, to some degree, that's not important.
Margin of error?
Well, it's, what we really want to do is get a random sampling through the system, and we need to get a family. If we fill in that random nature with a family, whether they were an apartment or a house is irrelevant. They're still drinking MVD water.
Right. It won't skew the results, anyway.
It shouldn't.
Right.
Because you wouldn't have counted on the 40 households. You would have counted on the one address.
Right. And apartments tend to be more transient than households, anyway, than houses. Because I'm not sure criteria, you know, what additional criteria, I mean, if you've lived here one year as compared to 10 years.
And they do, DHHS in their questionnaire does actually go through, how long have you been there? They are also looking for people who did live there for a significant time period and left recently, because you do want to get whether there's a significant exposure. It doesn't do any good for somebody coming and only living there for one day. That would skew the results.
That's right. That's right. Excellent. Okay, well, those are my questions, Tom.
I just wanted, I wanted to confirm quickly. You said they were using your list of bottled water people, but they're not sending the list to people that are receiving bottled water. They're sending those letters to people that are on MVD water.
Right, but as far as the people that we have the list, they wanted to have that, because we do have really good contact information by individual on that list. So they were doing the random sample, but then where they had them and they overlapped with our list, they're using that because of the contact information. And that would take care of the apartment problem. Because if we're delivering bottled water, we're doing it by household, not by house.
I think we're getting confused.
Yeah, the letter is supposed to go out to people that are in MVD water, not anybody on wells that are receiving bottled water. And I'm trying to understand, are you saying that they're overlapping with the bottled water list, or not?
We also, we get a lot of people who have sent in information that they are concerned, so we do have a lot of the contact information, and we do share that with DHHS to make it easier to do the contact. I apologize.
So that's an additional resource that you've shared with DHHS?
Yeah, we really do. It's been a very good collaborative effort. In fact, if you call the DES hotline number, it's a DHHS person who picks up the phone, Jeff.
But that makes more sense, because it was, you mentioned bottled water.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
I had another question. When you were talking about dates that you did air quality sampling or that you have results, I heard 2005 or '06, and then I heard 2016. Was there any air quality sampling in between?
No.
For 10 years while they were phasing it out, there was no testing of what was going on?
Oh, I'm sorry? They found, yes, in 2007, there was an additional.
And it has, had reduced, or do we have any...
That was the confirmatory test that they did after we, you know, issued the administrative consent order, where they, where we restricted them to 75 ppm. After that, we had them test, you know, to demonstrate that they were in compliance with the ambient air limits for ApFO. So, but since then, no, they've, we haven't had any tests until the May 2nd test that we did.
Okay, and during that time, they were theoretically phasing down on the use, or they had cut off the use, or...
Well, they were phasing down, you know, from the 75, and as the raw material manufacturers through a consent agreement with EPA, you know, went through and actually modified the materials over a 10-year period, or over an eight-year period, with the total phase-down to occur by 2015. By 2010, they pretty much reduced the amount of ApFO in those materials by about 90%. As you went into the second, you know, the first half of the next decade, 2010 to 15, you were at about 15 ppm. So they, they were knocking it down over time, and then the phase-out, you know, from the industry that actually manufactures it, was targeted for 2015. You know, the DuPonts of the world and Salves had an agreement where there would be no more ApFO in the material after 2015.
So I, I guess I, in 2005, '06, '07, you had an agreement to reduce. Wasn't there a time when they came back, or you said, okay, you're not using it anymore? Other than 2015, 2015, or is that...
So the, so the air standards, the ambient air limit, was demonstrated compliance with that in 2007, based on a certain concentration of ApFO in the product at that time. And that standard has stayed the same for air. And then since then, they have reduced the concentration of ApFO in their raw materials, but they were already at that point in compliance with our ambient air limits. So there was, you know, they were continuing to reduce, but it wasn't necessary to show compliance with an ambient air limit. Does that clarify?
I guess it, it still leaves us with eight or nine years of no idea what's going on there, because nobody tested it.
We don't, we didn't directly test the air, but they do at the end of every year, for any controlled chemical, they have to state how much they put out, and so they did give annual reports. We could track. You know, we measured in 2007, they said they had come down, we could see that. And then each year, they reported, and they showed a very consistent trend of using less and less of the material, which would end up with how much was emitted. In 2007, they got within the ambient air limits, but under the AOC, which I always get the abbreviation wrong, they continued to bring it down, and then also in line, their suppliers, with their commitment to the EPA, were bringing it down in the materials. So they were both using material that had less of it in it, and they were committed to using less, which they followed through on.
So you were making an assumption based upon the products they were using, that there would be corresponding decrease in the air concentration of it?
Well, they report actual usage and material balance information, concentrations, all that sort of thing. So it was all scientific calculations, but it was based on the information provided by both the supplier and the company.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I understand, but that's the...
It's confusing. I mean, eventually, it showed up in our water supply. We don't know when it started showing up in the water supply, but obviously, took a while. And something was happening during that duration of taking a while, whether there was more going out in the air and falling out in the rain, and finally making it down into the water wells, or...
I would suspect, I mean, we believe Kemfab was using, we don't know for a fact, but we believe they were using ApFO. And it was at a much higher concentration than what they went down to in 2006, 2007. So I would suspect that the PFOA that we're finding in our drinking water now was emitted in the '80s and the '90s and the 2000s and the 2010s. So it's, it's an accumulation of all of that.
So if I can follow up on that. What responsibility did you have at that point for monitoring what Kemfab was emitting?
As said, it's an air toxic, and so they do have to report how much they're using under the tests of the time. The tests showed that there was no emission, because they couldn't detect it. Once there was a detection and they knew it was actually coming out, is when we had the AOC with them, and they started bringing it down.
Just keep in mind, the concentrations in the raw materials we're talking about were going from parts per million. The concentration we're discovering in the water is parts per trillion.
Right, which was my next question.
Right, so, yes, they were emitting it at a period of time that was not measurable. When it became measurable, we dealt with it. We brought it into standards for ambient air limits, but now we've discovered that it's getting into the water, and we're working on that part of it.
Okay. I'm sorry, Bill.
That's okay. But just to circle back, from 2007 through 2016, you relied upon the information provided by Kemfab/St. Cobain, but did not physically validate the information that was being communicated to you by St. Cobain? Is that, is that a fair assumption?
I would say we checked the information they gave us, which is how much they used. We did not go up and actually measure it at the stack, because in 2007, when they reported less use, and we measured at the stack, they matched. We did not, year after year, when they reported using a third less, go up to make sure it was a third less coming out of the stack.
So you validated data from 2007, it confirmed what they were reporting, so you relied upon their reporting, 2008 moving forward, that had you gone out there, you were confident that the number that you were going to arrive at was going to be the same number that they had arrived at, is what was being emitted out of the stack. Is that...
That's how we regulate contaminants around the state, yes.
Follow-up, Madam Jeff?
Go right ahead.
You talked a little bit that you don't do a lot of air sampling, but that you use water sampling as a surrogate. I guess my question to you would be, what, what information is, would be acquired from sampling water that might not be acquired from, from sampling air? And what is the value of using water as a surrogate as opposed to sampling at the source?
Yeah, I should be specific. It's surrogate in this area, and the reason why we're doing that is because that's where the health risk is. Everything we've seen, the amount that's emitted out of the stacks, the inhalation, is not the risk vector. It's the ingestion of the water. And so we've concentrated our efforts on testing the water, because that's where the risk is, and that's where the direct contact is.
So you're saying if I, and I don't mean to sound stupid or trite, so I apologize in advance, but you're saying if I were to stand and stick my head over one of the chimneys while it was emitting toxins into the air, and I were to breathe that in, the potential of me developing something as a consequence of doing that probably is far less of something happening as opposed to drinking water that would be absorbing what was being emitted out of the smokestacks?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Jeff.
Eileen, you look like you had a question.
I did. I was wondering, when did, when did we start testing, when we knew that the PFOAs were becoming a problem? In '05, I think you had said. When, when, or, when did you start testing water? Was that just a more recent phenomenon?
Yeah, so there's actually two rounds of testing to really speak about. There was one a couple of years ago. It's called the UCMR. It's the Unregulated Contaminant Monitoring Rule. I always want to say regime, it's rule. They did that a couple of years ago, and the samples that were taken in the Merrimack area, most of them tested non-detect. One of them tested, I think, 32. When they retested, it came back as non-detect.
That's right.
And what year was that?
I'm sorry?
When, when was that?
It was 2014.
And that was MVD.
That was MVD. At that point, we really could only detect at about 20, 25 parts per trillion. The detection level was just that high, and so a non-detect might have been 20, and the one detected was a 32. Also at that time, the only advice we had was what's called a provisional health advisory, and it said that 400 parts per trillion is the worry line. St. Cobain, because of the stuff that was going on at their other facilities in New York and Vermont, tested their water. And that's how we came back. Now, they came back at 30 parts per trillion from the MVD water. The difference is, we were reading the same news out of New York and Vermont, and we had actually started plans to go out and do our own testing, just to see what we would see. And so we actually had the team pretty much ready to go and swung into action once we got their results. Even though we're still way below the provisional health advisory, you've learned a lot in the last couple of years, and the testing, we can now detect very, very consistently down to two, three parts per trillion. So you get a much better idea of what's really out there.
Okay. Now, do you, where was, recognizing you can only get down to 20 parts per trillion in the day, is there the potential that this will continue to increase as everything percolates down through to our well? down through to our well source or?
Yeah, our, our hope is actually no. They have been consistently cutting the stuff out of everybody's process stream since they had this agreement with EPA back in 2005, 2008. So everybody's been getting less and less of it into their process stream and a number of companies have been putting controls on TCI. The other company that, you know, has this issue out in Amherst, they put secondary treatment on their stacks. They actually burned the stacks and that clearly is having a bigger impact. It, it does help reduce it down. And so between just having the total levels come down, people being more and more careful, the amount that's been getting into the air has been coming down. And so it should be that we see this eventually start to just remediate just from natural wear and tear on the chemicals. This stuff doesn't tend to stick in the soils. It tends to go through fairly efficiently. So if it came out five years ago with regular rain, it's down in the water table. If it was out a year ago, it's probably down in the water table. And since they haven't been using the materials in the last year or so, I think what was going to get down there is down there. And it should be starting to break down. Some of this has been out there for thirty-plus years and it should be breaking down.
Right. Thank you.
Bill? Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a follow-up question while I have you folks. And it was a question that I had asked at, at the previous meeting and since you're here, I might as well ask the question. Obviously, we're relying on the numbers that we're seeing right now, but we're also, the state's been going through a drought condition. And assuming if we get a heavy winter and the groundwater repercolates and refreshes itself, do you have any belief that that number might increase or decrease as a result of the, the aquifers recharging? And we, would we be looking at, and I understand hard data is hard data, but it's difficult for me to ask you to speculate, but I mean, would it be, would we be seeing dramatic changes or is it, would it just be subtle changes?
Yeah, we've had philosophical discussion about this because we don't know. I mean, it's such a severe drought. The belief is, we really won't see much of a swing at all. You're measuring in parts per trillion, so the actual amount of the contaminant down there is relatively low and it's already diluted by a large mass of water. And so the belief is that it shouldn't have any huge swings. If anything, as, we've been looking at results from MVD and others, we're not seeing huge swings. We did have one issue where one lab consistently, we were seeing significantly lower numbers, thirty, forty percent lower numbers. We actually worked with the EPA. One of our colleagues discovered this and found that there was a interpretation of the 537 test done by the EPA and certified by the EPA, that some people were reading that you should do something and others were reading you shouldn't. And it is that PFOA comes in two isomers, one is linear, one is branched. The instructions were mute as to whether you should add them together or not add them together, whereas for other chemicals, they say you must add them together. The one lab read that as you shouldn't and so they were only reporting linear. EPA really didn't expect to see any branched PFOA in nature. In fact, when we asked them for samples to use as a laboratory standard, it was only linear. And that's part of how we found this out for them. They've now changed the instructions based on what one of our people discovered. So now the results are right on top of each other. We send performance evaluation standards where we know exactly how much of everything is in there. And all three labs we used came back within a couple parts per trillion of each other. It was impressive how accurate they were. Now that they've corrected for the branched, we're finding as the results are right on top. So we're not seeing, even if we've gone through this drought, we haven't seen a sudden spike in concentrations because there's less water in the same PFOA. So the belief is, when we do recharge and hopefully we're recharging, we won't see it suddenly drop away to nothing either.
So minus the filtering of the water-
Become more diluted.
It's going to become much more diluted as we go, as we go along.
It should break down and, I mean, just naturally, we should see the concentration go away. The problem is, this stuff was designed to never break down and it was designed really, really well. It is extremely resilient.
Right.
It's depressingly resilient.
Too good of a job.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Yes, John?
So based on what I've heard here, even if you knew what Kemfab was doing, would you have been able to detect it at that time? And your colleague is shaking her head. Because I figured there was no test at that time for any of that.
Back in the eighties, we couldn't have tested the levels that would have detected this, no. Really, in fact, in 2005, when they brought in their test results, that was the first time anybody had ever seen it coming out of a stack. The tests in 2004 and all of the data showed it is not going up. And to be honest, there's never an intention for it to. PFOA costs them money. It, it's not a cheap chemical to build, it's not a cheap chemical to get. It serves a purpose in their process and their belief was they were recycling it. They were grabbing it and getting it back into, you know, the next generation of chemicals. At very low levels, it was going up the stacks and at the technology of the time, you couldn't detect it.
Okay.
Okay, well, first I, as I've said before publicly, I have always felt that DES jumped on this immediately. Were responsive to any requests we've ever had, as exemplified by you coming before us tonight. So I want to thank you for what you do. I know it's not been easy. Hopefully, it's lightened up a little bit. It was really chaotic there for a little while.
Right, right now, we're trying to get some construction contracts in place.
Yeah, okay.
They started digging this morning in Manchester, which is nice, it's right on my commute, so it makes my commute worse. With luck, we're going to really mess up my commute and get Litchfield building real fast. Merrimack, the houses we've identified that are on private wells, they've put a number of them onto MVD water to give a little bit of pitch for the company and they really have been stand-up. We spotted a couple more in some of the recent results and they immediately added them to the list and the Bantus is out doing them. In fact, one of them tested and they were in that neighborhood and I think they started the next morning. So we're going to get them done. They have the commitment in place to bring in the temporary treatment next summer and they have paid for the design work for permanent-
That's for the wells four and five?
Four and five, yeah.
And that's the movement of the filter over from New York to-
From New York. Now, that will only give you about half of the capacity of those two wells back for next summer, but it's half a million gallons a day. And they have paid for the initial design work so that if they agree to do permanent treatment, they, the design would be done. And the reason I really push for that is if they didn't get the design started now, you would lose two summers from now. And so the goal is to get a half a million gallons a day of filtered water next summer and then have full capacity in place two summers from now.
And of course, we all know that the MVD has approved the building of the Booster with Penetech.
Yes.
And that's going to be done before winter.
Yes.
So if that's completed, in case of an emergency, that's there. So that's a nice backup.
Yeah, and that will give approximately a million gallons a day of capacity.
If we had to, yeah.
Yeah, and Penetech water, they've been measuring, we aren't measuring it every week anymore and it's consistently measuring low. We are testing the MVD wells. I know I just saw a couple of them come back. I don't remember them off the top of my head.
Okay. So, and so we've seen a lot of action in a short period of time. Some people don't think it's fast enough. I personally think it's been amazing that the government has been so responsive. So I think we need to give you kudos for that. Any other? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. That was relatively painless.
Thank you for your help.
Okay, comments from the press are public. Seeing none. Recognitions, resignations, retirement, none. Appointments, this is annual review of the Town Center Committee. Come on down, Nelson. Submitted by Town Center Committee Chair Nelson Disco. Per Town of Merrimack Charter Section 6-6, at least annually, there should be an annual review of the Town Center Committee. This agenda item is to highlight the committee's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns a council should know or could act upon. Welcome, Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, members of the council. It's a pleasure once again to review with you what we've done in this past year on the Town Center Committee. The Town Center Committee, as I've, I've, by the way, I have taken the liberty to distribute to each of you a copy of these charts that I'm using as a guide to my talk. And, and in addition to that, I've handed out a little trail map, but we'll talk about that in a minute. The charter, as you probably know, our charge was given by this council to the Town Center Committee in 2009 to implement the results of an eye track study that had been previously done under the auspices of the Town Council. We're tasked to work with town officials, residents, this is the Conservation Commission, the Watson Park Committee, and the EdCAC to develop a safe and environ, and a safe and inviting town center. And our efforts are to be focused on what we call, what we defined as the town center in the Town Master Plan, which is the area of town north of Fraser Square and south of Front Street along Route Three and east of the FVA return pike to the river. That's for discussions purposes, that was the town center as defined. We've focused so far on some certain aspects of that. There were nine recommendations that were made by the Eye Track Committee when they put together this plan for the town center. Various segments of sidewalk along Route Three and Babu'sak Lake Road and leading into the schools and connecting the schools to the town center and to the library and other features of the town center. The, in addition to that, there were some trails identified that would be part of this town center plan that would link the Watson Park to Wildcat Falls, to link, to make a passage under Route Three using the old sluice way and connecting Twin Bridge Park with Watson Park. So that's the charge that was given to the committee. And you, I have here before on this, on this chart, a map of the different segments that were identified and the different segments and a priority was assigned to them at that time. We haven't strictly followed the priorities for various reasons, but we're intending to do all of the recommendations that are in that master plan. The, let me see, I went backwards here, whoops. Current membership of the committee, I am the chairman. Peter Flood is our vice chairman. Jackie is our, Jackie Flood is our secretary and represents the, representing the Watson Park Committee. Matt Chevanel is representing the SAU now, the school board, and we'll talk about that as a change this year. Mary Hendricks represents the Merrimack Chamber of Commerce. Bill Wilks is the Citizen at Large. Finley is the Town Council Representative. And we still have one vacancy, that one vacancy that we keep advertising for and hoping to fill. Kyle Fox has been our advisor and aide in, through the Department of Public Works, working with Eileen and helping us make things happen on the town side. The major projects that we've undertaken this year have been work on the Sahigan River Trail. We've tried very hard to increase our public outreach and make the public more aware of what we're doing. And we have made this year an application for additional TAP funds, that's transportation, the Transportation Alternative Program, which is federally funded through the Department of Transportation and which will, in this year's application, allow us to build some sidewalk along Woodbury Street and north of the library. Also, we've done some work with what used to be called the Safe Routes to School. We're working with the school district on improving certain pathways, certain sidewalks along O'Gara Drive and, and Woodbury Street to make the safe route, make safer routes to school for pedestrians walking. The Sahigan River Trail is our big, is the jewel in our crown at the moment. This is, was an award last year that was made to, to help, to build the trail, basically to construct the trail along the Sahigan River, starting at Watson Park, going under the Route Three and then continuing on up to the Merrill's Marauders Bridge at the, at the turnpike and then connecting in and continuing into the trail network on the, on the eighty acres so-called in Wildcat Falls. There is a, this grant was an amount of $436,000, which is a lot of money. It's a federal program and it involves working a process that the federal government lays out for doing these. So it does add some to the cost, but it is federal money and that's the way they want it spent. The, this will connect to the footbridge over the Sahigan River, as I said, and then the, the, let me see, the, oh, yes, the chamber, the, one of the keys in obtaining this funding was the fact that we had in our capital improvement program, money set aside to improve the sidewalk on the east side of Route Three in the, adjacent to the Chamberlain Bridge, which was a real safety hazard. And it was because that was in there, we received extra points, which able, enabled us to win this very competitive award. The, the, a contract has been awarded to Quantum Consultants for design of this project. This year, they held one public hearing to consider alternatives. As part of the federal processes, they have to look at alternative ways of accomplishing this connection and they presented an alternative, which was pretty roundly dis, not, not approved, not liked, disapproved, dist, I guess is the modern word, to, by the people attending the public hearing. Basically, it avoided the passage under the sluice way and had people walk from Watson Park up to the lights at, at Canal's Shopping Plaza and then come on back down the opposite side of the street to connect in by the fire station. And our recommendation was not to do that. And I think they, pardon? They just had to look at alternatives.
I see, okay.
Okay? So this was-
So that was part of the procedure?
That was the alternative that they came up with.
I understand now.
That's, yeah, right.
It wasn't a real suggestion, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I understand, yeah.
There is plan for another public hearing in the month of October, but it has not been scheduled yet and it may-
Better hurry it up.
Pardon?
Better, better hurry it up if you're going to get-
Well, yeah, that's, that's, it may not happen, but it was originally planned to happen in October. It may slip into November or some later date. The construction has slipped out to 2018 now, the actual construction of this trailway. So, but it's moving and it's funded and we're happy about that. The, yeah, was it, the committee this year also worked on a, a sign to be placed on, that was, that is placed right now on the Merrill's Marauders Bridge. And it's got a, it was a well-made sign embedded in clear plastic. It's mounted on the bridge. It identifies Merrill and his accomplishments in Burma during World War Two. And he was the designer, as you may know, of the bridge across the Sahigan River on the FVA return pike. He was head of DOT for a time after he came back from the war. And this recognizes his work. We got some help- We got some help from the National Park Service to fund the sign, and also from Joe Hurlehy, who's a company, lettering design company, actually put it together and built it. And working with Kyle Fox, we were able to mount that on the bridge. So, that's there now, awaiting the crowds that will come when-
When it's built.
Yeah. So, we also continued to hand out and develop our trail map, which I gave each of you a copy. I have some copies here if there's anyone who wants extras. It shows you the connection and how that'll all fit together, and a little bit about Merrill's Marauders and his gang. The outreach activities we've done this year, we've done several things to make the public aware of this TAP award and of what we're trying to do with sidewalks in the town center. We've been distributing that map, which you have a copy of. We've had a little booth set up that we've set up in several different places. Peter and Jackie Flood have been instrumental in making this happen. They've come out with a little tent and these maps, and we've talked to people at the Business Expo and a couple of the farmers markets this year. And we get very positive public reaction, and all of these booths that we've put out, people come by and say, "Oh gee, what a good idea that is." So, we just keep it going. We've, Peter has been instrumental in installing a trail map in the town hall. There's now a town hall, a map, a copy of this map that's mounted on the wall in the town hall in the entrance to what used to be called the Selectman's Conference Room and that other conference room downstairs, the Memorial, excuse, thank you Jackie, the Memorial Conference Room. So, that'll help people recognize this project. We've, let me see if I've got this on the right. No, not there yet. Wait a minute, I've lost myself in my, go back three. No, not that back. Uh-oh, uh-oh, I've done it now. I've lost.
I think if you go three up now-
Pardon, what?
If you go three up.
Three up?
On the-
Line side, right, no.
Tim to the rescue.
Thank you, Tim. All right.
I still wanna go back a couple.
Now, I still wanna go back a couple. Nope. Okay.
There we go.
There we go, right, thank you. All right. So, we've installed that trail map in the town hall. We've also made presentations on our projects to the Highway Safety Committee, to the Merrimack School Board, and to the Merrimack Rotary Club. And we're continuing to do this to try and develop connections with the Merrimack Chamber of Commerce and with the EDCAC in the future, to keep, to get other groups in town aware of what it is we're trying to do. The Art in the Park Project with the Manchester Art Association went on again this year, and that was held in the Watson Park, and the Merrimack Rocks is held in Watson Park. Both of these are attractions to the town center, bringing people down there and saying, "Wouldn't it be nice to be able to walk?" Okay, we get very positive reactions, and I, whoops, okay, now I'll go this way. Yeah, with the Safe Routes to School, the Safe Routes to School as a project has kind of gone by. That was a buzzword for a while, and it's kind of faded, but we're still working on the principles involved, namely to get people able to walk to school and both to the high school. Safe Routes to School only affected grammar schools, and our real big need is to get it to the high school. So, that we've, well, it was part of the original study and survey. It has a lot of public support. People say they really would like to see it. Originally, we formed a separate committee to follow through and get funding through the school, and that didn't work out too well. The people who were able, who were interested in it weren't able to meet, and it kind of fell apart. So, this year, we made a special effort to reorganize our interface with the school board, with the SAU. And we went and briefed the school board, and they agreed, and they realized the importance of doing this, and they've appointed Matt Chevanel, who is their administrator there, to be the official liaison to our committee. So, he is now attending and keeping the school board informed of what we're doing and vice versa. They have agreed at the briefing that I gave them to put the O'Gara Drive sidewalk in the capital improvement program as part of refurbish, refinishing of that road anyway. It would be part of a reconstruction, resurfacing, I should say, of O'Gara Drive. So, that's moving along very well. The other plans, the plans we have for 2017 is to implement the Sahigan Trail, keep working with the Quantum Design Associates to make this happen. We've got more public hearings for design input on that. We're going to continue our outreach program, and we also, it isn't right on, oh yes, we have a, we're pursuing TAP funding, that's the Transportation Alternative Program funding for other elements of the town center plan, and that is a project which came before you, which you all approved about a month or two ago, you may recall, and it was to add Woodbury Street, to do Woodbury Street and a section of the sidewalk north of the library up to the connections with the new bridge and Woodbury Street and Wire Road intersection. So, we're doing that. In addition to that, we've arranged for this group called Heal New Hampshire, which has been working on the complete streets development in the state of New Hampshire. They have an interesting approach, and they are encouraging the building of sidewalks throughout the state. Several cities and towns in the state have signed on to this. There's a study program to include what's called complete streets in the 10-year-plan projects, and that study committee is, was funded by, was established by the legislature at the end of their last session, and we expect sometime early this, or before the end of this year to have a recommendation, hopefully to include complete streets thinking. Basically, it's a way of thinking about designing of a street to do more than carry cars, to carry other means of transportation, specifically bicycles and pedestrians. We're going to continue to seek other school safety improvements. There are some things that need to be done that need a little more detailed planning in the area of school street and where the pavement ends and where the pedestrians can go is, can be confusing at certain times of the day, and we're gonna be looking at that with the school district and see if we can do something there. So, that's our plans for, our plans. What we'd like to recommend to the council this year is to establish a capital reserve fund for the town center for the ITRAC recommendations, specifically limiting it to what's in the ITRAC plan. But if we can put those projects into the capital improvement plan, they will, that will really help us win awards for federal and state money and other outside sources, because most every outside source looks to the community to see what they have in the game. Are they willing to stand behind it? Are they willing to do it? And if we have it in our capital plan, it creates extra points in scoring these kind of projects. So, that's what we'd like you to consider, especially this year. We're going to continue support, we want to continue the support we were getting from the DPW and the town manager, they've been very helpful to us. If you can advertise or help or let anybody know about our committee and what we do, and we would really like to have some more people on the committee. Put some suggestions here for further information, if you wanna know more about walkable town centers and all of that. Those are on your chart there, different websites and things to go to, to prove to you that I didn't make all this up out of my own head. So, with that, I will ask for questions or comments, and again, I hope you can see your way to help this year in the, in planning for the future.
Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair Nelson. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you and to everybody else in the Town Center Committee for what you folks have been doing since-
Two of them right here.
I understand, absolutely. What amount of money would you be looking to have the town invest into the capital fund? Do you have an idea as to where-
Well, we haven't really, we haven't really costed out these projects. I mean, we have not gone that far. I know that Kyle has costed out the Woodbury Street. That's, I think that's the only one he was ever asked to do, and that came in. Woodbury Street is kind of difficult to work, as you may tell by walking it or by driving it, you can see that it's got some challenges, and that came in at around $250, no, around $200,000, around that. And I think it can, you know, there's ways to, that was kind of a back-of-the-envelope estimate, and that's the only thing we've done, but we'd have to sit down and work each project a little bit and get some real numbers, I think, to put it into the capital plan.
Why did you look at the Woodbury Street project first as opposed to looking at the, creating the connectivity of the trail from the west to the east, especially where you've got to create a bridge to go over the bog, you've gotta make the improvement with the Slusway, and obviously, any consideration of connecting Watson Park with Twin Bridges, you know, there might be a cost factor there as well. I'm just curious, you know why?
Well, first of all, the project you're talking about is funded now.
I understand.
So, that doesn't need to go into the capital plan anymore, okay? That's a done deal, as far as we're concerned. The reason Woodbury Street was moved up in the priority was because our observations of the people using Woodbury Street as a pedestrian road is amazing. If you go there at, when school lets out in the afternoon, when the high school lets out, you have to drive very carefully down there because there's so many people in the road. And so, we saw that as a really important need. Also, we didn't, it was, Eileen had asked Kyle to do that, so that's why it was done, Bill. Eileen requested it of Kyle, and it was his response to her that I'm quoting the money from.
Well, Nelson, we, on the committee, we've been talking about the Safe Route to Schools and shovel-ready projects, that term of about eight years ago. That conversation led to the request of Kyle to have an idea of what we might be looking at, to see if it was something that we would tackle. And that's when, when I was hearing the numbers, and I didn't recall the exact number, I was stunned, but it's a drainage problem with that road. It's just one big ditch on the sides.
That it raises.
And it goes up-
Significant slope going up to the high school.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the Merrimack High School skateboard slalom.
They do skateboard down it, it's quite exciting. Yeah, yeah, really, really, no, I've seen them do it, yeah.
I run up it, so, I take a different approach to it.
Get a skateboard, Bill.
Anyone else?
Did you ask something to say?
Go ahead.
Okay. I did wanna say too to Bill that it is a kind of, I guess people call it a holistic approach to the town area, that all of these trails are getting consideration, and sidewalks too. In other words, walkability of the town and access to, easy access to the businesses, particularly in town. And I wanna emphasize to the people that might be actually listening to this, you can walk it now, and we're not waiting particularly for the Slusway, though you take your life in your hands without it. But all that whole area west of DW Highway is all totally wonderful to walk with anybody that has dogs. It's just a terrific place. And I just wanted to, just a small thing, Nelson, I hate to correct, but there's no more Watson Park Committee.
Okay.
Though we all hold it in our hearts, all the original members have a special place for it, definitely.
It's incorporated into the Parks and Rec.
It's incorporated into the Parks and Rec. And I also wanted to thank, it reminded me when you said you walked up it, because Bill Cummings is our new, a new member, and we're still looking for alternates, but Bill Cummings is so new, he's not on that list, and he walks it every day too. There, thank you so much, Nelson.
Okay, I'm sorry I left Bill off, that was a big mistake. He's been an active member.
Yes, he's a wonderful new member.
Yes, yeah, and I'm sorry about the Watson Park Committee. I think when this was set up, it was, that's the way it was, so I'll correct that too.
Yeah, the, you mentioned that Heal New Hampshire.
Yes.
That, they're gonna have that presentation in front of the EDCAC, I think it's next Wednesday.
November 9th.
November 9th?
November 9th.
Okay, that's right, that's right.
That was what I was gonna talk about.
That's a different project, and they're, on the 15th, Heal New Hampshire is presenting to the Merrimack Planning Board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nelson, Transport New Hampshire is presenting to the Planning Board.
Transport New Hampshire, okay.
David Grace is coming to the EDCAC on the 9th.
Okay.
Of November.
Of November.
Thank you, okay.
It's a good thing you're here, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Anything else?
We'll get this correct.
You still have more? Yeah, if I may. I think, I think, you know, you're making this, we've talked about this before, okay, making this connection with the trails and the accessibility issues, but you're forgetting the health issues involved in this. If you, you know, now that I'm retired, I tend to spend more time driving around town on irons than I used during the day, than I used to before when I was limited to weekends, and there's a significant number of people out there who are walking, and there's a significant number of people that are using the trails up at Horse Hill for bicycles, mountain biking. And we're not talking just adults, I mean, we're talking, you know, 10, 11-year-old kids going out there on their trail bikes, riding that area. So, there's a definite quality of life, health issue that's involved in this, and the opportunity for people to engage in activities that not only give them better connectivity to the businesses in town, but also provide them with the opportunity to improve their physical well-being.
Right, yes.
And carrying on the additional thing from Bill, you're gonna come in for the Capital Improvement Program, have numbers.
Yes, okay, if you're interested, I will be happy to do that.
Even if they're back-of-the-envelope numbers, they're starting points.
I'll be happy to do that.
As long as they're not outrageous.
That's what I was gonna suggest, that it's not just ITRAC, but do it by projects.
Correct.
And having some numbers, and you can prioritize. Paul?
What do we have, Nelson?
Ah, okay. So, when we make the consideration about the CIP, that'll be the actual projects that are involved, what their cost would be and the priorities that you would place on.
Yeah. I'm done, thank you.
Tom, you have something to say?
Yeah, Nelson, thank you very much. I guess what I'd like to ask is, from a Town Center Committee perspective, I hear a lot about trails and walking and things like that. Is there any effort or interest or thought being put into how do we either reorganize, rezone, revitalize the town center, quote-unquote, this area of land that you talked about, to encourage any particular development? to encourage any particular development to make it a town center or to increase parking or availability for these people that are going to walk these trails? Where do they go? I mean, they have most of them in this town come in with a car, and so where do they put it?
Well, that was one of the key reasons to connect into Watson Park, was that you had that parking available there to begin the trail, if you will. Also, there's a little parking at the other end of Courier Road for that trail access part. We, as a committee, have not looked at the zoning issue in town. I think that your suggestion there may be one of the recommendations in the master plan to look at at that. But I don't believe the planning board has done anything with that yet. That doesn't mean they couldn't, and I think it's a good suggestion.
Okay. But you don't think it's a Town Center Committee kind of an opportunity to push that or?
I think we can recommend it to the planning board. I think it's really.
I know you can't make the change, but yeah.
I really think it's the planning board and the Community Development Director. Maybe we can bring him in onboard.
But I mean, obviously, they would appreciate any guidance or suggestions they could be getting from somebody focusing on a town center concept.
Some people appreciate guidance and some don't. Thank you.
Well-stated.
Well-stated, thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, so that's already being done. So at least you know that that's that CIP with the projects is being worked on, so.
Thank you. That's great.
We've already responded to that. Boy, are we fast.
You are good. You are good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Nelson, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Nelson, thank you again.
All right. Appreciate it. Somebody else has got a presentation. Hey, thank you. Thank you for that. Bill out here.
Okay, the next item, public hearing. Just want to let you know that just before this meeting, I heard that we do not have to do a public hearing on the New Hampshire Safety Agency grid acceptance from Merrimack Police because it's already in the budget. It's already been. Paul, you want to explain a little bit?
Yeah. The 3195-b states unusual and unanticipated revenue. About two years ago, we figured that the convencer grant was not going to be unexpected every year, as maybe Captain Dudash can talk a little bit about it. But as far as I am, under the understanding that we have the convencer grant and we have the convencer as long as we want the convencer. So it's not unanticipated money. So we have been budgeting for it in our budget, and we have an offsetting revenue and an appropriation line for the convencer grants. But it's always good to hear about.
So how should I document that this has been?
Well, it advertises a public hearing. We should go ahead and have a public hearing since we advertise. We just don't have we just don't have to vote on it or whatever.
Okay.
And since you've already opened a hearing by having a discussion of of why we don't need it, you can ask for input from the public.
Okay, I'd like to open this so-called public hearing. What time?
Have you introduced the item, Madam Chair, in full?
And let's say, let's do the closing of it first before I comment on that.
Captain Dudash.
I'm going to. Okay. Want to close it? So we did it out of order, 816. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, this has to do with the New Hampshire, I've already labeled it, I already spoke about it. Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a grant in the amount of $19,158 from the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency for the Merrimack Police Department to operate the seat beat convencer. Seat belt. Oh, it says beat, though. I read it. No, I read it. It says beat.
Mine says that, too.
Thank you. It was not a might have been a Freudian slip or someone who put it in there. Anyway.
Again, if you write in it, it is a beat.
You do get beaten, that's true. First of all, I've already specified about this. Does anyone in the public want to say anything about it first? And then we'll ask if there's any further information we need. Saying no, I already closed it. Okay, 816. Now, what else? Do you want to say anything additional?
No, just no, just for the people outside, you know, watching the show, the seatbelt convencer is basically a tool. It started off about probably about 20-something years ago. Dover Police Department started with it. It is a simulator of simulates a car accident at about five to seven miles per hour. So if somebody gets on it, it's like a sled, comes downhill, and you're involved in a low-impact collision. And it's basically trying to convince people, especially driver education-type-age kids, to wear the seatbelt. So it's a real educational tool. And Dover had it for about 20 years, 18, 20 years. They gave it up, and then the Merrimack Police Department at that point picked it up. And as Paul McCallie said, it is ours every year just to renew and and to go over. But Merrimack Police Department's had it probably the past seven, eight years. And we go throughout the state. It's in demand. We get calls probably on a weekly basis to set up shop at, you know, local hospitals to nursing homes, to schools, to the most recent one was the Hollis Home Day. And we have a lot of people come up, so we give a lot of speeches and and actually simulations of people getting on the the convencer. But it's a great tool, very educational, and it's exactly what it's about. It's all about education, making sure everybody's wearing their seatbelt.
Excellent. Excellent. That's all we need to do, is that correct, experienced people? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We do not need a motion, so we can move on. However, the next one we do. Second public hearing, proposed zoning ordinance amendments submitted by Community Development Director Tim Thompson. Town Council will hold a public hearing to consider the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, and this is a second reading, regarding accessory dwelling units and signs. Section 2.02.1 and 17 are supported and recommended by the planning board pursuant to RSA 675: 2 in Chart Article 5. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the council. As you may recall, I was here a couple of weeks ago with the first reading of this particular request for a couple of zoning ordinance amendments. What I've got here tonight is I figured it would make sense to reutilize the PowerPoint presentation I had utilized with the planning board, just to go through the the basics of what we're talking about with these two sections of the zoning ordinance. So to give you a basic overview, the two different sections we're talking about are accessory dwelling units, which I plan on giving you a quick refresher on the new state law and the master plan recommendations, and then an overview of what we're proposing for ordinance changes. In the sign section, we're again, I'll give you a quick refresher on the Reed versus Gilbert Supreme Court case and also the outline. These amendments were recommended unanimously by the planning board back on August 16th. Going back on the ADUs, there's a New Hampshire Senate Bill 146, which was introduced in January 2015, passed both chambers, but of course, they didn't agree with each other, so there weren't the need to agree to either through conference or somehow coming to agreement on the two different versions of the bill. Ultimately, in early 2016, those were resolved. It was signed by the governor in March, and the effective date of this new legislation and this new law is actually June 1st of next year. But since we had been working on this particular project, going back not only to the master plan, when I first started work here in early in 2011 and 2012, but also, we had a joint meeting, the planning board and the zoning board, back in December of 2014, where we talked about accessory dwelling units at that point. And the discussion at that stage was, we probably should wait because the original introduction the introduction of the bill at the legislature had just happened. We said, let's wait to see what the legislature does, and then we'll react from there. Two years later, here I am. Master Plan actually does have a specific recommendation regarding accessory dwelling units, calls for the town to consider revisions to the ordinance to allow them to be a more viable housing option, and also not to restrict them to only family members, which is what is the current ordinance. However, and the state law that was just passed also mimics this, we require owner occupancy of either the principal or the accessory dwelling in order to ensure that we're not looking at a neighborhood where you have absentee landlords. There still has to be a commitment of the property owner to live in one of the units in order to qualify for under this revision to the ordinance. Again, the rationale started with that joint planning board zoning board meeting in 2014. The amendments were put on hold. Essentially, this language would address that master plan and the state law goals of assisting with meeting the needs of a diversified housing stock. It also helps us in a limited way to address the workforce housing law that the state also passed several years ago, without making a significant wholesale change to our ordinances and regulations by making a dramatic change. Just the ability of making an accessory dwelling unit a more viable and rational process assists us in providing with a diversity of housing choices, which is one of the goals of the workforce housing law. So this is an easy way for us not only to knock off and deal with this new state law regarding accessory dwelling units, but it also helps us to address the workforce housing challenges that were presented with that law. And it also addresses the ZBAs issue of trying to fix the process that was required for special exceptions. The zoning board, again, going back to that 2014 meeting, was concerned that they were seeing so many requests for accessory dwelling units, and they were usually so simple that it didn't really they didn't feel the need that they had to individually approve each one through a public hearing process. So what we've proposed to do here is two separate types of processes for ADUs. For attached ADUs, which is the type of the type of unit that we're typically seeing and have seen in Merrimack, where it's attached to an existing home, that's now an administrative process that would be handled by my department and the building department. We're introducing a new type of ADU in the ordinance, which would be a detached ADU, where if you had a detached garage or another accessory building on your property, you could essentially do a unit over your garage or something else detached from the single-family home. In that case, rather than that being an administrative process, because there are more things involved with a situation like that, that would now be a conditional use permit process with the planning board. So we've tried to address the issue of the zoning board being involved in something they felt was tedious and repetitious that really didn't need their judgment to now having it as administrative process or a process with the planning board, which I think is better equipped to handle some of the intricacies. And really, the planning board is a better place to do these types of approvals, simply because they have more flexibility in how they can apply ordinances and regulations than the zoning board can. The zoning board is really bound by specific language in the ordinance, whereas the planning board has a little bit more leeway and flexibility to deal with these through that conditional use permit process. So how does this affect what we have for existing ADUs? We no longer can and we will not enforce any previously recorded restrictive covenants that regard family occupancy, but based on the advice of our attorney, those are no longer enforceable under the new state law. So those existing ADUs can now be occupied in accordance with the new state law, meaning that they no longer have to restrict to their family members, but they still have to have the property owner living in one of the two units on the property. It cannot be an absentee landlord situation based on both the state law and the ordinance language we're proposing here tonight. So to summarize what we're looking at, there's basically three sections of the ordinance. Section 202.1A, which is to insert a new subsection with the criteria for attached accessory dwelling units to be permitted and to renumber the remainder of that section. We then go into section 2.02.1B, which is the current language that requires the special exception process with the zoning board. That was now deleted in its entirety, again, renumbering the remaining sections. And then to section 2.02.1, under residential permitted uses, adding a new subsection regarding conditional use permits for these new detached ADUs in the process for the planning board. Regarding signs, this goes back as a recommendation that came from legal counsel following a United States Supreme Court case, Reed versus Town of Gilbert, Arizona, where the U.S. Supreme Court invalidated municipal ordinance that gave favorable treatment to signs that advertised church services rather than signs promoting another message. So what is that impact on local regulations? A sign code that makes distinctions based on the message of the speech is content-based and will not meet the strut scrutiny legal standard for judicial review of an ordinance. So locally, what that means for us is we had to go through our ordinance to amend all of those sections where we had content bias, particularly in our case under what was section 1705, which is the permit not required section. So this section of the ordinance and these revisions were primarily developed by my planning and zoning administrator, Gillian Harris. She worked closely with town legal counsel to review that section and put together ordinance amendments that remove the content bias and simplify the temporary sign process. And again, what we're looking to do here is not to change fundamentally how we handle signs in town, but just to make sure that we have a legally defensible ordinance regarding content neutrality without, again, making any significant changes to how we deal with signs in the ordinance. So this has several sections we're talking about. And we're first, and probably most importantly, is inserting a new section 1702, which is a severability clause. What a severability clause enables us to do is, if for whatever reason somebody were to take us to court and invalidate a section of the sign ordinance, it doesn't therefore then throw the entire section out. It allows us to say, if a court finds something to be invalid, that section is invalid, but the remainder is still it's it just helps us and doesn't put us in a situation where we find ourselves with no ordinance whatsoever. That was one of the first recommendations, both from our legal counsel and from other recommendations from municipal association and other towns and cities that have gone through this process. We've renumbered section the new renumbered section 1703, which now includes that flags of national, state, and historical significance are not regulated by the ordinance. Again, that's one of those gray areas that we could have found ourselves in trouble because we had a section saying, these flags are allowed here and these aren't allowed here. We've tried to simplify that to make sure that, again, if you have a flag, you're free to do it without any restrictions from the town whatsoever. Renumbered section 1704 is add language clarifying that signs containing non-commercial speech are permitted anywhere the advertising or business signs are permitted. Again, that's making sure that we are treating different types of speech equally. Next section is 1706, which is to insert a section to allow one sign per residential property, meeting the criteria without regard to the content. Again, getting rid of that content bias that was previously in the ordinance. Section 1705, 2 and 3, 1706.2, those are both removed. Sections of 1705, remove that section entirely based on content bias. 1706.2 was reworded to remove content bias. 1706.3, added language regarding maintaining public safety as justification for the reason for the rationale for those requirements. Section 1705, this is that section of permit not required, deleted sections 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 13, 14, 15, 17, 19, 21, 20, 23, and 24, because we had content bias in all those Again, the next several are removing language regarding sign content, adding that language regarding public safety in two additional sections. Again, this is going to sound like a broken record. This is the it's again, removing content regarding sign content. The new section 1708 adds language for one temporary sign per property without regard to content meeting the local criteria for temporary signs. This language allows for an extra temporary sign for properties that are currently for sale or lease to get into those situations. We obviously don't want to restrict somebody from having a sign out if they want to sell or rent their particular property. 1708, the holiday and special event signs is now gone because it's content bias. If we're saying you can do it for a holiday, it's biased against the other 364 days of the year. So again, based on the recommendations of legal counsel, those are gone. Again, adding language for public safety, removing content bias in the other sections. We're almost done. Section 1707, again, removing it entirely, renumbering remaining sections. 1711, removing the word advertising from the title and again, modifying the language due to the content bias. And lastly, throughout the entire section, the previous drafter of the ordinance used the word premises all over the place, which doesn't really reflect the current terminology. Everything we do is based on parcels, so the word parcel was substituted for premises throughout the property, just so we don't end up in a situation where somebody were to challenge us and say, well, I own this parcel, this parcel, this that's the premises. We wanted to make sure it was based on a parcel basis, which is what all zoning requirements are. Process-wise, again, the planning board held their hearing on August 16th. I was here for the first reading on September 22nd. Tonight is our public hearing and first and second reading. Assuming we get a favorable outcome here tonight, we look forward to hopefully seeing this scheduled as a consent agenda item at an upcoming meeting to be determined here tonight. And certainly welcome any questions or comments from the council or the members of the public.
Okay, yes, Tom?
Yeah, I've got some editorial corrections.
It's regarding the numbering of the sections. I've already caught some of those.
No, the extra line feeds and.
Gotcha. Yeah, formatting-wise.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I marked those all up.
So what content-wise, it doesn't change and it's more?
No, it's just.
No, no. However, I do I do have a couple of queries on that.
Okay. See, this is what happens when you retire. We you have the time.
You read stuff like this.
Don't give me that luck.
Come on now.
I'm retired and I'm not.
Speaking from experience.
The one item that we have, the one item I will point out that we have noticed is on page 2-10. You'll notice that there are two item Hs. We've already noticed and fixed that in terms of our forms, because as you know, once this was posted for public hearing, it's become effective. So we've already had people come in under this new ordinance to apply for ADUs. So we've had to change our, to fix the typo I had when I was putting this section together. So that was the one I noticed, and I knew there were some other formatting things that were going to have to be addressed, so I appreciate that, Tom.
Okay, so on page 2-9?
Yes.
Go down to paragraph 3G.
Yep.
That's sort of old language.
That is actually not being amended. That's part of the home occupation...
I understand that. But the fact of the matter is, is that they, you're allowing only two deliveries per day, okay? What about pickups? Because they do pickups now. I mean, it's restrictive. I mean, really, I mean, you know, I'd...
I will note that for future revision.
Okay, okay, so, and besides that, deliveries are not always predictable, as much as they try to. All right, 210.
Yes.
You in here shall not have provisions for separate utilities, garages, driveways, and other similar amenities. Okay, that last one we had for an ADU at one of the two ZBA meetings, that as an alternate, they were asking for...
Variance to offer the second driveway.
Variance to have the second driveway because of the paratransit issue, okay? Or other medical type things. So is that still...
That would still be something that would require a trip to the zoning board. That was not part of the special exception for that, for that ADU. That was actually a specific variance request, because that language is still the same from what it was in the previous ADU language, where because we're trying to make sure that an ADU does not, in appearance, look like anything other than a single-family home, the provision of the second driveway was considered to be making it obvious that it's more than one single-family residence there. So that would still require variance under the language that's proposed under this ordinance.
They had a very visible second driveway on that property.
And they had a totally legitimate and perfectly reasonable use that absolutely was a perfect case for variance.
For three days a month.
Absolutely. But it also was one of those that, because the state law, this is totally off-topic for most of the council, but the state law changed back in the late 90s regarding variances for people who have a recognized physical disability or handicap, where the zoning board is essentially allowed to totally, to not even consider hardship in those cases as long as it's for a person with a specific or recognized physical disability or handicap.
Right, because I'm looking at the 1,000 square feet and the next two paragraphs down, not exceed 1,000 square feet in area, and you have all these mobility devices now that really put, that really could put strain on 1,000 square feet.
It could.
When you consider doorways and separation walls, and so you would consider that also a variance request.
That would be another thing, that would be a variance that, again, if it was somebody with a disability, would be relatively slam dunk.
Okay, and that, I had that also on 12.
Yes.
Under parasees, subparasees.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'm good. Thank you.
Jackie?
Now, Tim, as I understand it, you would be the, your department would be the one that is the repository of the information and the place where people would file, and then you would make, you folks would make the decision whether...
Essentially, when the, and we've actually already done at least two of these since we posted the language, somebody will go to the building department, say, I want to do an ADU. They'll get sent to my office, or they'll start in my office if they know what the process is. We'll go through the criteria with them, make sure that they meet those criteria, assuming they do. We have them put together a brief letter explaining what is they want to do. We respond with an administrative approval that says, you are hereby permitted to pursue your building permit prior, provided you meet X, Y, and Z, which are the criteria from the ordinance, and then once that happens, they get sent to the building department where they could be issued their permitting. The one item that we've worked out a couple of kinks on is the recording of the covenant regarding making sure that it doesn't change into a condominium form of ownership. The way the language is written in the ordinance is that that has to be done prior to the issuance of restricted covenant occupancy. The trick on that is, is if this is an existing home that's doing an ADU, there really isn't a new C of O for those particular units, because they already have it for the single-family house. So what we've done in our forms and formatting with the building department is if it's for an existing single-family home, we revise the language in our letter to state prior to final inspection by the building department. So we've resolved that issue that way.
Yeah, well, I think that it's very well thought of, thought out. I'm really impressed with it. I think you've thought of a lot of very good details.
I tried to utilize the constraints that we were set with the new state law, talked with several other communities, looked at what they were doing before and after the new law has been passed, and tried to pick and choose some of the best aspects of each while trying to keep it uniquely Merrimack with some of the items that were in the previous sections of the ordinance, but modifying, modifying them slightly so they work for a more streamlined and administrative process.
Yeah, I think it's very good. About the signs, signage. Now, there's going to be like three or four different categories still. There's going to be commercial and then others.
Essentially, if you look at, we've added definition for non-commercial speech, which we previously didn't have. So there's really two types of speech we talk about now in signage. It's commercial speech, which would be for a commercial or an industrial project, or non-commercial speech, which would be, you know, a sign for home occupation or somebody's residence, a political sign, anything that doesn't have, convey a message of selling something. So that's, that's how we're differentiating and making sure that we don't have bias between commercial and non-commercial speech.
Yeah, and is there going to be a, like a, like a two-day type of sign? It seemed to me that there was going to be a very short-term sign.
Advertising for an adventure.
Enter the temporary sign section here, let me get there.
And then maybe one larger, like a for-sale sign or a political sign that they seem to put out right...
Political signs, we really defer to the state law on those. We try not to touch and really deal with...
What do you not...
We defer to the state law regarding political advertising.
Oh, sure.
We really don't do anything with them, to be honest with you. In terms of temporary signs, given the circumstances.
Yeah.
Yeah, right now, our temporary sign language is really unchanged, which is that you can allow, we allow temporary signage that is maintained for not, a period not longer than 30 days in any consecutive 90-day period. So if you have in any 90-day period, you're allowed 30 days of temporary signage. So after that 90 days is up, you could come back and ask for another temporary sign.
Would you have to ask?
It's, temporary signs are still subject to permitting requirements. The other section regarding permit not required, those could be done without regard to any permitting.
Can the head of friends and family come and ask for a variant or permission for the whole town, or does each person, does Mistress Smith have to come in?
They still would have to come in for those, those would be temporary signs, and those would be subject to each individual property owner allowing them to...
And they have to come in for permission?
Technically, we have, any signs you see at intersections, advertising, Lions, Turkey Shoot, technically, those are all legal under our ordinance and have been.
They're what?
They're technically illegal, have been, and are still illegal under this revised ordinance.
But even on Mr. Smith's lawn?
On Mr. Smith's lawn, if Mr. Smith is doing something that's specific to Mr. Smith's property that that sign resides on, that's allowed.
But it's for the Lions Club?
That's where it gets a little trickier.
Okay.
But I, and I've said this before, and I will say this again, given the reality of the staffing of my department, we do not actively go out looking for sign violations, nor do I have any plans to do that. We rely completely on what's called a service request process, where if somebody were to report to my department a violation, we will investigate it and resolve it, but it's not something that myself or my staff will go out and actively start. We only act on enforcement complaints when we have an actual public complaint from somebody documented in our files. So that's just the reality of any type of enforcement, not just signs, but any type of enforcement activity. Given the realities of staffing and funding, I just cannot have somebody to get dedicated to enforcement 24/7.
Right.
And Jackie, it's important to note that the changes that we're making here to the sign ordinance have nothing to do with our current sign ordinance per se, everything to do with the concern about content bias and things of that nature.
Yes, I agree in that.
So we're trying to, all the changes were restricted to that. There's, if we get into all the various changes people would like to or consider making...
Let's get the torches and pitchforks ready now.
Could be here for an awfully long time.
Good, good point, Tom, and we'll take them.
If you recall, we had that about four or five years ago.
Right before I got here.
Yeah, I was part of that one, yeah. Yes, I see that. Well, that's great, because I was hoping that with the, with the improvement of that, the concept of the, of the content, no content base, that maybe we'd pick up some advantages in the commercial area.
Again, it simplifies and streamlines how we treat signs of different nature, but it doesn't really change how we regulate them. That's ultimately what we've tried to do here.
Okay, thank you, Tim.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Bill?
Thank you. So just to confirm, I've read the information. If I wanted to display a sign for a candidate for U.S. Senate, governor, Congress, and six state rep candidates, is nothing that prevents me from doing so?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. The second question, and I mentioned it in the first hearing, and I want to mention it again because I think it's important. How are we going to enforce absentee landlords as it relates to ADUs?
It's, the one thing that we can do is, the only thing we can do is have them go through and sign that restrictive covenant when they go through the application process. Again, that basically confirms that the property owner is going to reside in one of the two units and that they will not change the form of ownership. It's the same way we did enforce anything else. It's going to be based on that same, if there's a violation that somebody makes us aware of, we'll investigate, but outside of that, there's really not much we can do.
Now, that restrictive covenant, would that be signed under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I believe the language is set up in such a fact that it does, it makes the town a party to and gives the town the ability to enforce, and it does get recorded to the registry of deeds.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Actually, I was just, my thought on Bill's comments just then, or his inquiry, I think the whole point is you don't want a frat house next door.
Oh, absolutely.
And so if, in fact, there's somebody not there, we might never know anyhow. It's just if it turns into a frat house, you have a better way of dealing with it.
We're bound to find out if there's going to be issues. If that type of thing, situation comes up and there's issues and the police are there a lot, I would imagine that either Chief Doyle or one of his staff members are going to let me know, and we'll then go through the proper processes.
My son lived in a house at college with seven other guys.
I remember those days. In a state, several states away.
The town clerk, I'm trying to think of the information, if you're looking up a house, it would have an ADU listed, right?
Yes, the, the property card through the assessing department will indicate that there's an ADU, yes.
So it'd probably be pretty easy to find out whether the owner...
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's not necessarily true.
Not necessarily true. Again, if somebody's, if the property owner's a real distrust, but it's Joe and Jane Smith who are the trustees living on the property.
You'd have to do a little dig, you could find out.
We certainly could.
Yeah.
I do want to point out that up to five unrelated people can still reside in a home regardless of this change.
Yes.
So that really the danger isn't even covered under this, under ADU.
It's more to keep from having people convert their house into a duplex.
Exactly.
And rent out both sides and go somewhere else.
And in terms of the detached ADUs, which is the new category that we've added as part of this ordinance, the state does not allow us to require additional lot size for attached, but for detached, they do. So in the language that we've provided here, we are basically saying that if you do a detached ADU, you need to have one and a half times the lot size that would typically be required for a single-family.
Interesting. You've seen those Grammy pods, right? No, never mind, I won't talk about it. Have you ever seen that?
Well, what did you call it?
A Grammy pod, they call it. And it's basically a structure that...
A little bit of a place.
Well, a little bit...
It's not a tiny house.
It's not tiny, no, it's not that tiny, but...
We saw them in Denmark. We saw them all over the place.
Okay, are there any other questions from the council? Okay, I'd like to open the public meeting at 8:47. Saying none, I'm going to lie, I'm going to close it at 8:48. I will entertain a motion for it to go on to the final...
Madam Chair, I move to the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Bill Boyd and second one by Tom Keenick.
Need a date for that?
On October 27th.
October 27th, consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 6-0-0. Thank you very much.
I'm just going to confirm, you don't need me that night, do you?
I'm sorry?
You don't need me that night, do you?
It's the consent agenda. If no one objects, it's gone.
Well, unless you really want to. I know you look forward to it.
You'll be there, sharing our pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Wouldn't it be a bummer if it was something else you had to be here for anyway?
That's always a possibility.
We can have you join us by phone if you like. Maybe even be able to Skype you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim, have a good night. Good weekend.
There are, let's see, any legislative updates from state reps? Saying none. Paul, town managers report?
Yes. The Merrimack Girl Scout Troop 10916 recently completed work on a video, how to use the Merrimack transfer station. The girls did a wonderful job on the project. The video can be seen on the community channel, cable channel, and the Merrimack Public Works Facebook page.
I like the way he did it.
Yeah.
Okay, consent agenda none, oh, business none, new business, okay. Committee appointments, and the gentleman is not here, but committee appointments submitted by town council chair Nancy Harrington and vice chair Finley Rothaus, the town council to consider appointing the following individual to a town committee pursuant to charter article 4-8, and this is Sean Sylvester for the Heritage Commission full member. This is the student who did the flag presentation to us, and we had recommended that he go talk to Anita about it, and as a result, he found out that there were really a lot of interesting things about that, and so he's requested to become a full member, and Anita is thrilled, obviously, and he might even have another person that might consider as well. So he was highly recommended by myself and Anita to become a full member. Yes, Bill?
Question, do we have any, any age requirements to serve?
As far as I know, no, but he's going to be 18 next month, because I...
I mean, I was just curious, so...
I had the same question and I was told no, but in the meantime, he had told me he's going to be 18 next month, so...
Okay.
We have student reps on various committees.
Yeah, for school instead.
School.
Well, no, like...
Student rep on the Parks and Rec committee?
Yeah, for example.
Who cares? Seriously, who cares?
I think it's great that...
If they're willing to give the time, they can get to the meetings, and they're contributing members, who cares?
Yeah, and it's great seeing someone younger becoming a volunteer committee.
I mean, I'm happy about it.
The two in Heritage, it's terrific.
And don't get me wrong, I'm happy about it, I just was asking the question.
He, I'm sure everybody remembers when he made his presentation here, I, when I got the agenda item that week before, I'm going, aye, aye, aye. The kid was amazing, I, I'm very impressed.
And I said to him that I have not looked at a flag in the same way since.
That's true.
You know, you look at the state flag, that's not a flag, that's a symbol.
It's a bed sheet with a, with the town seal.
With the town seal in it, that's right. So anyway, I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the appointment of Sean Sylvester as a full member of the Heritage Commission.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second one by Tom Mahan. Any further discussion? No, and he's not here. I thought he was going to try to be here, but we can do the vote. Yeah, he's probably doing homework, is right. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? None, 6-0-0. So we will notify him, we'll have this signed, but we'll notify him to come in. Okay, Captain Dudash, you're going to be here for the next couple, so come on down. This is for the new business items two and three. First one, donation acceptance for Merrimack Police Department, submitted by Captain Dudash. Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $100 from Ms. Helene Baum to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to offset expenses for the PAC program. And I'll let you go ahead with that.
Okay. The Merrimack Police Department received a $100 donation through the mail from Ms. Baum with a nice card just stated that she really appreciated everything the Merrimack Police Department does, and gave us $100, hoping that the town would accept that on behalf of the council. And we're hoping to put that money towards the PAC program, which is kind of the hybrid of the former DARE program, which is, you know, in the school system, help for peer pressure and bullying.
Sounds good. Any questions regarding this? None. I entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move approval and acceptance of the donation of $100 from Ms. Helene Baum to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to offset expenses for the PAC program pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. Furthermore, that the town manager and her proxy be authorized to do what's necessary to accept the donation.
You don't have to do and/or, just do or. Or proxy.
Thank you.
Well, I, he corrects me, I can correct him.
That's true.
Okay?
We correct each other well, don't we, Madam Chair?
You wouldn't do and. There's never a time you have to do it and, it's or.
Okay.
God, God.
True.
He's true.
Okay, second?
Second. Oh, Finley.
Finley Rothaus. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Six, zero, zero. Next one, donation acceptance for Merrimack Police Department, again, by Captain Dudash, to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $3,500 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the Merrimack Police Department. And I'll let you go right ahead.
Again, once again, this has been like, I think, the last five years or so that Digital Federal Credit Union has sent a check to the police department, hoping for us to accept it to go towards a worthwhile program. For the past five, six years, I think it started off around $2,000, they saw $2,500. And this year, I think they went up another $1,000 to $3,500. And again, we'd like to see this go towards the PAC program, which again is a great program. It's kind of that hybrid of the DARE program.
Excellent. Any questions regarding Dudash? None. Motion?
Madam Chair, move approval of acceptance of a donation in the amount of $3,500 from the Digital Federal Credit Union, DCU, to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to offset expenses for the PAC program pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager and her proxy...
Or.
Or, geez, I was trying to be funny and I failed. Or her proxy be authorized to sign all the documents necessary to accept the expenditure.
I thought you got Nancy laughing, you must have worked there.
It worked. Okay, second?
Second.
Tom Mahon. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. And none opposed. Okay.
Thank you very much. I'll just add that we will be sending thank you cards to each party.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Captain. Okay, Captain Peter Albert, come on down. Grant application approval for Merrimack Police Department submitted by Captain Peter Albert seeking town council approval to apply for a grant in the amount of $4,000 made available through the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security. And I'll let you go ahead and present that.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Our containment team is part of the New Hampshire Tactical Officers Association, and we've been involved in a homeland security, planning of a homeland security drill with that organization, which our containment team would take part in, in a location, a retail location in southern New Hampshire, where they would do basically an anti-terrorism or active shooter-type drill, in which the team would be involved. And we just recently found in our meeting last week that the Homeland Security, New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security was going to free up some grant money to reimburse the towns for their officers taking part, and then backfilling any shifts that cost overtime, in which we do have roughly, right now, they just asked for an estimate of about $4,000 it would cost. So I'm just seeking permission to move forward on that grant, and then submit it to Mr. McCauley.
To apply for a grant. Okay. Any questions? Motion?
Madam Chair, move...
There was a question.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, Jackie.
I had a general...
I'm sorry, Jackie.
Sorry, Nancy. I just had a general question. These were very generous donations, and we're very, very grateful to them. Does anybody solicit them, or do they just...
Well, this is a new, this is the grant I'm coming before you on, is for the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security. And they have grants available, and we, you know, you can ask and inquire. And when we found this out, that this was available, obviously, I can't move forward on it without your permission, so in that situation, we do. But in situations like Captain Dudash just brought forward, and folks that I've come before you with on the K-9 Fund, these folks just come out and make generous donations. They're very nice civic-minded citizens.
Wonderful. Great. Okay. Any other motion?
Madam Chair, move that the town council approve the Merrimack Police Department to apply for a grant.
You need your microphone?
Thank you, that's a first.
Yes, it is.
That's a first.
You'll never forget that.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council approve the Merrimack Police Department's request to apply for a grant in the amount of $4,000 made available through the New Hampshire Department of Homeland Security, which will be used to cover the cost of members of the Merrimack Police Department to participate in a regional police training drill, and to pay overtime on the backfill of shifts left vacant for this training pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any paperwork necessary to execute the application for the grant.
Well done, Bill. Second?
Second.
Second by Tom Mahon. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Don't see any negatives, so six, zero, zero. Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, next, Assistant Chief Brian Bornhamann. You get the next three items. Did you lose the toss that you ended up being last?
No. I stepped forward with both feet.
Donation acceptance for Merrimack Fire Department. Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $2,000 from Safco Insurance on behalf of their local agent, Advantage Insurance. So go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The, back in the early summer, the owners of Advantage Insurance had approached us about doing some community outreach, some safety education training to, basically, they were having a chamber event. They wanted us to come down and do some training, and I put it in your backup, but some CO, some fire safety heading into the summer, some grilling, and ended up into a long discussion. It was a really well-received event, but they submitted, based on that, one of their eight companies, Safco Insurance, has a grant program, which is called Protecting What Matters, which is for that type of training or education. They submitted it, and it was approved. So we're looking to accept that $2,000 to the fire department for the purposes, keeping with their grant program or what that initiative is, we want to earmark that for community outreach and safety education, kind of keeping in line with what the original grant was intended for.
And where does the safety education, it's like going to the schools and stuff? Is that what?
Well, civic groups will approach us and ask for education. If you remember back a while ago, one of the businesses came in, PC Connection, because they had the CO right now, kind of as a sidelight to this. We're developing and looking at some of the programs we have, I don't want to say we have like canned programs, but we're looking at them, taking the technology that the PC Connection had given us...
Oh, that's right.
...to try to do some PowerPoints and stuff like that. This money, if I told you a specific thing right now, but as we develop those, if we need brochures or something that's going to make that better, that's what we're...
Augmented, yeah.
So it's some type of risk reduction within the community.
Got you.
By the way, PC Connection changed their name last week.
To Connections.
To Connections, yeah, that's it.
Just Connections.
The company formerly known as PC Connection.
Formerly known as. Yeah. I guess they had quite a...
I was just going to say that. Just going to say that to Walpole.
It's a dating service.
I heard it cost a little bit of money to get that name, too, because somebody already owned it.
Really? Interesting.
Anyway...
I remember when they were working out of a mill over in Walpole, or wherever they were, over, no, in the Keene area someplace.
It's before they started.
Before they started, yeah. It's one of the few places you could get software for Macs.
Ah. Okay. Any questions? Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Assistant Chief Bornhamann, in the memo that you provide us, in the second to last paragraph, you write, Safco Insurance is prepared to donate $2,000 to the Merrimack Fire Department on behalf of their local agent, Advantage Insurance. Is it fair to say that the check is not in hand yet, and is...
I received it since the, that documentation went in. We do now have the check.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Saying none. Motion?
Madam Chair, move that the town council accept and expend a donation in the amount of $2,000 from Safco Insurance on behalf of their local agent, Advantage Insurance, to the Merrimack Fire Department to be used towards public fire and safety education and community outreach pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to expend the donation.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Boyd, second by Tom Koenig. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone against? No. Six, zero, zero. Okay, next donation. Town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $50 from Fuji Film, Dimatrix.
Dimatics.
What is it?
I don't know. It looks like Dimatics. Dimatics?
Dimatics.
Me.
Dimatics. In memory of David R. Loisel. Go right ahead.
This is a continuation, or this came in after we were here, before you, back in the early summer. As you remember, our crews were involved in a roofing a house after a tragic accident. Some donations had come in in memory of him. This one specifically came in from the employer of the Mr. Loisel's daughter.
Ah, okay.
But it came in afterwards, so it's in the amount of $50.
Thank you. Any questions? Saying none. Motion?
Madam Chair, move approval and acceptance of the expenditure of a donation in the amount of $50 from Fuji Film, Dimatics, to the Merrimack Fire Department in the memory of David R. Loisel pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to expend the donation.
Second?
Second.
Finley Rothaus.
Thank you, Tom.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Six, zero, zero. Last but not least, town council to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $100 from Thomas LaBerge to the Merrimack Fire Department Paramedics for life-saving help. Go right ahead.
This one is, the backup we gave is a little vague because of HIPAA laws.
Yeah.
So...
You can't, yeah.
So it was a $100 donation, and it came in with simple attention to the Merrimack Fire Department Paramedics for that, and it was in quotes in the line on the check, for life-saving, for life-saving help.
It's a thank you.
It is a thank you, and the interesting part is it's two years later. It was a significant injury and a long convalescence, from what I understand, and...
Okay.
It was a couple years later when he sent it in.
Very nice. Any questions? Saying none. Motion?
Madam Chair, move approval and acceptance of the expenditure of a donation in the amount of $100 from Thomas LaBerge, the Merrimack Fire Department Paramedics, for life-saving help pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any documents necessary to expend the donation.
Second?
Second.
Second by Finley Rothaus. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Six, zero, zero. You want to do it next time?
No.
I almost said, Jackie, you seconded it.
Yeah, it is, we should be breaking down the line.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Okay, so be it, a little five-minute recess. Reconvene?
The new business, Town of Merrimack's tax bill insert, submitted by Finance Director Paul T. McCauley. Town council to consider enclosing a breakdown of the 2016 tax rate in the next tax bill mailing. Paul?
Last year, Town Clerk, Tax Clerk Diane Trivik came to me with an insert that she received in one of her tax bills for a property outside the Town of Merrimack. And we brought it in front of the council last year, and the council thought it was a good idea. We talked about it again at the retreat, bringing it forward for review of the language, and to see if this is something, the pleasure of the council, to see if this is something that you want to do to include with this year's tax bill to actually break out. We've talked about it a lot, we always talk about it during the budget season, you know, how much money goes to the town, county, school, and this is a breakout of a pictorial and a graph. The numbers are not finalized yet, just to update you on that. I received a phone call from DRA yesterday. The town and the county are final. The school district is still in the review process. Hopefully, the DRA rep told me, hopefully, within the next couple of days, I'll be rectified, and we'll be able to get our tax rate soon.
Good. Okay, open for discussion. Or a motion? I don't get...
Yes, Jackie? I do have a question, and I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this here. The state school chair, do we still get money back, do you know?
No.
From the state?
Yeah.
Are we just strictly donor and not receiver?
We do get money back, but I believe that with the Dover lawsuit, things are going to change for the Town of Merrimack.
Yeah. For the worse.
For the worse.
Yeah.
There was a lawsuit. Yeah. The school's going to lose a million dollars. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Are open for discussion? No?
The question I would ask is, do we have a preference over which property tax rate we also...
Do we have any preference over which, you know, what we include? Do we want to use the pie with the entire local school and state school at 73%, or broken down with the state percentage and the local school percentage? Because personally, I like the bifurcation of the state and local school setup. I think it's a more accurate reflection of where people's property tax dollars are going.
Are you suggesting we choose one or the other?
Yeah, that's...well, that's what I'm asking, is there's a preference.
Why don't we keep both? I think we keep it both exactly.
You're saying keep the 2016 one and Paul...you're saying to keep that one. See, Paul gave us two choices, I thought, in the handout. Am I right, Paul?
Okay, so one has just the pie, right?
One has the together.
The state and the school as two different pieces, whereas the other one shows it as one big chunk.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's okay.
So you rattled me, Bill, so...I'm only kidding.
That's okay.
I understand what your point is. Okay, so you like the first one as...
I do, I like it better, I think it's cleaner, it's simpler, and...
Yep.
And it represents all the numbers that are in the book.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And as far as everything else, I think Paul did a dynamite job on this. I think it captures the essence of what we talked about a couple of months ago, and I really like it.
Excellent. Finley?
I was just wondering, the tax bill is all-inclusive of all these different pieces, as we all know, and I don't know that it's a big deal for me, but I was just wondering if we might start that paragraph off with the tax, you know, the tax bill consists of however you break it out, three or four...
Sections.
Sections. So if you...and then, if you have questions on the municipal portion, contact Town Manager and put the numbers out that way, because it is a single tax bill for the town, and started off, and again, I don't have major heartburn over it, but I just thought it might be a little bit more appropriate.
So how would you say it again?
What was your suggestion?
That instead of starting off with the Town Council controls a municipal portion of the tax rate, say that the municipal tax rate or the tax bill, whatever, consists of three or four, however we break it out, sections. If you have questions on the municipal portion, contact this number, the school portion that, the state portion, the county portion.
The tax bill consists of four separate...
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's not a major deal, I just thought it might be...
No, I think...
I think it's good.
I understand.
Legal entities or something like that?
How about the Merrimack tax bill has four components?
Yes.
Okay, make it simple.
The Town Council controls the municipal portion of the tax rate. If you have questions on the municipal portion, contact Town Manager's office.
How's that?
Does that work?
Yeah, that's perfect.
And the Town Council's...council should be capitalized.
Yeah, the C, I caught that.
Yep.
And the B between controls.
Yeah, and then the school board and the school board, yeah.
Yes, Jackie.
Yep, B.
It might be the way my brain works, but to open up an envelope and see numbers, I'm not...I understand what they are and all, but I'm not sure that I wouldn't rather...I would rather have the written part first.
At the top, I agree with you now that you made a comment.
That's fine.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah.
It sort of introduces the...
Exactly, the concept of what am I looking at here?
Excellent.
Also, the county portions are underlined, and I think that's just by accident?
That's because it's, when you see the underline, it's for the...look, you got to look in the next line, and it's the total. So it sums up everything above, that's why...that's why they're underlined.
So below that, it's the total, okay.
So it's to say, okay...
Oh, that's the summing bar.
That's the summing bar, so you take everything above it, equals the total.
Yep.
That's why it's underlined that one.
Okay, that makes sense.
Excellent. That's a good idea about moving it up, too.
Okay.
The only other thing is grammar through the sentence, and I mentioned "the" in a couple of places, and in the fourth line, it says property tax assessments. You should contact the assessing department. If you have questions on your property tax assessment...
You should contact.
Should contact, yeah, it needs to be "you should," or just "contact."
Either one, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You're right.
It's amazing how things like that will slip by.
Contact.
Just take out "should," yeah. On the paper.
Nope, that's perfect. Perfect. Okay, so I don't think we need a motion on this, but I have a consensus with those changes. The Town Council agrees?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with it going in the tax bill mailing.
Okay, do we need a motion?
I would.
You want to do a motion? Okay, I'll accept a motion having to do with agreeing to have this sent out with the recommendations that have been spoken about.
So moved.
Ah.
Second.
Second by Jackie Flood. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None, six, zero, zero. Now, what should we do with the next one? Tom, what's your pleasure on this?
I can withdraw it.
Okay.
Unless you want to have any further discussion.
I would.
You want to have a couple of minutes? Discussion?
Just one, a one-minute thought.
Okay, go right ahead. So let me just say that there is a new item here. Consideration of Right to No Request to New Hampshire DES Air Quality Division, which was submitted by Town Council Tom Mahon. It says, "To date, there is very little information from the Air Quality Division regarding the monitoring of emissions from the St. Cobain site. I'm asking for a discussion of the issue and if the council desires to generate a formal right-to-no request to fill..."to file, actually, what I consider to be a glaring gap in information on the PFOA issue, and in response to that, when DES found out about it, they opted to commit, and I believe they answered a lot of the questions Tom had, but Bill, you want to make a comment? Go ahead.
The thought that I had, after listening to Assistant Commissioner Frees and his colleagues...
Freyse or...
Frezy?
Freyse, excuse me, I apologize.
I didn't either.
If the check clears, I don't think he's worried about it.
Oh, this is true. This is true.
Clark?
The testimony that he presented tonight is really no different from the testimony we heard from the first meeting that we had back in March, especially as it related to the fact that they did testing in 2005, the clarity in 2007, and then the follow-up testing in 2016. Outside of somebody in the community watching that meeting back in March and watching this meeting tonight, is it worth the council's while to still go through with an RTK request so that documentation could be obtained and at least put on our website so there's a level of transparency involved that if people really want to read, or if the state wants to send a letter encapsulating the conversation that was had tonight, or if and when the minutes of this meeting are approved, we post it to that website? I mean, don't necessarily have to do that. I'm just thinking there should be something on our website as it relates to this, because people might not have watched the meeting tonight, that at least provides a level of transparency that would address the concern that Council Mahon had tonight with his agenda request. So that's just where I was thinking on this.
If I may, I would suggest that we ask the Town Manager to contact Clark and see if...how formal those notes are that he was working off of, and supply us with, as you said, either a presentation, a report...
A summary.
Whatever, yeah, and, you know, and have that added to the...to the website, but also I would agree that to put the minutes on there, too, because there was a lot of questions.
Exactly, that clarified.
Clarifying information and that sort of stuff.
I sort of disagree with you, Bill, in the sense that I agree that a lot of the information had been previously presented, but I think it got lost in the total scheme of that evening with all the other stuff.
No, I agree.
And I think that there was more clarification in my mind regarding the specifics. I remember, my memory says like it was based upon models, and that bothered me, versus now, they really had a much more specific answer related to what they were using and using that, you know, the product, using that as a correlation to the air. That, I don't believe, was specifically stated during the meeting.
Fair enough.
So to me, it was much more clear than that meeting.
Okay.
It had more gaps from that, so...
Okay.
So I don't think it was the exact...I think it had some more...
Okay, that's fair.
Besides, they hadn't done the stack testing.
Correct.
That's true, the stack testing was not included, and I agree with you on that.
That's correct.
But the timeline that he talked about is pretty much...
Consistent.
Consistent, so, and that's where I was...
That's encouraging.
Right, that's encouraging, it's great.
Right, but he didn't speak to the 2007 clarity check, or whatever he called it.
The confirmation, what I would call the confirmation piece.
And, but everything else was accurate, there was nothing in between, and my first thought of that was kind of, I was stunned that they wouldn't do anything, but if you're getting product lists of what they've utilized...
The end result would automatically be.
Right, and so...
That made more sense.
Yep.
So, like I said, I just, I think that as opposed to people digging through, you know, online, watching the tape, or, you know, 20 pages of minutes, it's something I think would be appropriate to keep the chain of continuity on this issue.
On the website.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
So, Paul, can you communicate that? Excellent. Any other comments about that topic?
That's all I have.
Okay, good.
Thank you all.
Huh?
Thank you all.
You're very welcome.
You're welcome, Tom. Well, I mean, that's what I was trying to do, I just wanted to make sure that...
And again, they were responsive, and I think that reflects something, too.
And, you know...
Right. I had a question, too, so I had no problem. Okay, Brenda Lane, landlocked property sale. Let me find my little notes here. I'll quickly summarize. This parcel had previously been determined to be excess town-owned land way back. We had the auction, and in June 2009, this was auctioned off to an abutter. Since that time, that abutter has decided they don't want it, conveyed it back to the town, a newer abutter would like to be able to purchase it, and that really, it's a landlocked piece. It's a piece of property in the middle of some properties around it, it's non-buildable, can't do anything with it, but he just wants to clean it up, because I guess it's unsightly dead wood all over the place and everything. It has been presented, I gave you a copy of the RSA 47:5, which clarifies our authority to sell the property. Now, my question is, or two, do we want to sell the property? We do have the tax page there that tells us the assessment is $2,100, and the specifics, and if we do want to sell it, how do we want to sell it? Do we want to sell it directly to this person who's interested, or do we want to do something about notifying, I believe there's three other abutters, notifying them of availability to see if they're interested or not? Yes, Paul?
If you want to go the second route with the three other abutters, what we can do in finance, we've done this before, is we do a direct bid sale with the three abutters. We give them each an opportunity to give us a sealed bid, and then the council makes a determination on which bid they want to accept.
So number one, do we want to sell it? Yes, Finley?
I think yes, and what Paul had suggested is what I think we should do, because if there is more than one abutter, I think that you should all be notified and given an opportunity.
Tom?
Are you going to specify a minimum bid?
That would be something that the council can discuss. I would have to say that if you're going to discuss that, we do it tonight with a minimum bid, but you might want to do that in a non-public.
Oh, okay. So you can't tell us what the previous bid was?
It's $5,600 and some odd dollars when they bought it back in 2010.
Yep.
I don't see any bid here, he just says he's interested in buying it.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we have the property card, so what's the size of his lot, or the other lots that are involved, and what's the impact going to be on their assessment?
But that's their decision.
Yeah, and I really don't think we need to do a discussion of a minimum bid in...
In public?
In non-public.
Right.
In non-public or in public?
We can, I think we can do it here.
Do it now?
We're not, we're not, there's no, it doesn't, I don't think it meets the criteria.
Okay.
Right.
Yes, Finley?
I think there should be a minimum. I, the town assessing card, if that's, you know, the legitimate number, which I believe it is, I would go with that as...
The minimum.
As a minimum bid.
What would you go with a minimum bid?
The tax card shows $2,100, and that would be, I would like that to be the minimum bid, and it should be, and I like the sealed bids component that Paul had suggested.
Do we need a motion on that? Or just an understanding?
You would need a motion to proceed with the sale of the property.
Okay, so we need a motion to encapsulate that the council wants to sell this property, and the method by which it's going to be sold is...
Through a sealed bid.
Through a sealed bid of the abutters. With a minimum bid of...
Is it restricted to the abutters? I mean, we're in a public meeting, so anybody knows that we're selling it.
But we can notify by mail.
We can notify the abutters directly.
Okay.
Yep.
With a minimum bid of $2,100.
Okay, well, we're going to discuss it anyway.
Well, that's a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, so that's Tom Mahon with Bill Boyd, but let's discuss that just a second.
Yeah, okay. This is a very large parcel. It's a half acre, almost a half acre. That is a...
Is a half acre?
Yeah, it says it's a .42 acres.
.42.
That's real big, and that enhances the value of one of the abutters very, very well...
Significantly.
Very significantly. As a matter of fact, theoretically, I have no idea if this will be true or not, it could actually make the difference between them successfully applying for an addition...
A subdivision?
Huh?
A subdivision?
No, not necessarily, because it's not big enough for that, but for them successfully...
If they have action with their property, it might be that they could sub...
Exactly, exactly. They might actually be, it's true, if they have over an acre...
Yeah, but they have to have frontage.
Yeah, they would, yeah, but theoretically, and especially what I'm thinking of is like if they wanted a garage in the back or something like that, you know, it could really make a difference to a property. So I think the value has been established, if you pardon me, at $5,600, and it would be worth something more than that, to my way of thinking, because someone had already shown an interest in the property at that price six years ago.
If you follow me.
If you follow me. So I think that, to me, that's the floor. Even though we didn't follow through with it, and...
Yep, no, I understand.
You know, but still, there it is.
Mm-hmm.
I think the property is worth much more than that to one, there are three abutters?
Yeah.
Especially with three abutters, so there's competition. So I think there's more than that.
Spoken like a true realtor.
What?
Spoken like a true realtor.
Yeah.
What are the people's thoughts?
I see the point, because you're right, it's not another full lot size, because I am with the frontage requirements and everything.
But it would significantly increase the value of what you have the existing.
Yeah, half acre.
But reasonable now, I mean, I don't know...
But a real lot would be worth, I think, he's, the lots around it are probably assessed at 125 or something like that.
What do people think? Did we run out of steam? Yes, Tom?
Split the difference?
No, let's take a recess. Let's get a hold of a computer and look up the surrounding properties and see what they're, see what they look like, see what they're assessed at.
Okay, three-minute recess. Okay, three-minute recess.